Yeah.
Photos of home and clay and both of us, yeah.
Senior sunrise is a part of me.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It was like, what's it meant?
Down or?
Well, anyways, it's have like five.
I meant what's that?
Yeah, but so they, I don't think they.
It's memories.
They don't know what they're doing. They probably are going to like. But yeah, I am, I am posted, I am green. We have all of us are, this week has been very. Over. Yeah. Help me see your. I'm not. That's good. It's. Okay, there is somebody. It's done because.
So.
One, two, three, four. There. I don't need it.
Oh, no, you don't.
Guys, our, our people on Zoom are saying. You're us.
All of your lights are muted right now.
There we go.
Hey, guys, can you hear us now?
Check.
Thank you.
Guys, it's gonna be like seven.
Let's do it.
Good evening and welcome. I would like to call this meeting to order. This is the Scarborough Public Schools Board of Education School Board Meeting for September 2nd, 2021, and it is 7:00 PM. Agenda item 4.0 is the call to order. Agenda item 2.0 is attendance. Diane, could you do the attendance, please?
Dr. Gill.
Here.
Mrs. Giftis.
Here.
Mrs. Lindstrom.
Here.
Mrs. Seither.
Here.
Mrs. Turner.
Here.
Ms. Casalonis.
Here.
And Ms. Leighton.
Here.
And Ms. Bertulia.
Here.
And Ms. Giftis.
Thank you. If you would join me for the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands on a nation under God indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Agenda item 4.0 is adjustments to the agenda. Are there any adjustments this evening?
No adjustments this evening.
Agenda item 5.0 is public comment on the agenda. Is there anyone who, from the public, that wishes to make public comment? We do not currently have any attendees on Zoom that are not panelists, so I do not have any remote participants. Is there anyone in the room who would like to make public comment? So I ask that people who make public comment, please address me, the chair. Please state your name prior to making public comment, and please limit your public comment to three minutes.
Good evening. My name is Chris. I'm a Scarborough resident, and I have a kindergartner in the public school system. I attended my first meeting last month, and I was left with quite a few questions and concerns, mostly about the level of fear and anxiety that unnecessarily exists in our district. I like to point out the difference in perception and reality based on some facts and data instead of emotions. I'll begin with a few statistics from the CDC to level set. 2,361 hospitalizations for 5- to 17-year-olds. 326 deaths for 5- to 18-year-olds. Compare that to 400-plus flu deaths and 50,000 hospitalizations during 2018 and 2019 flu season and baseline that off 73 million children in the US. Some of those numbers were used at the last meeting, and they were spoken completely out of context. Those are national numbers. They are not numbers for here in Cumberland County, and I feel that the local response and restrictions does not adequately reflect the current situation that we face here in our community. If masks work, then why don't they work? Think about that for a minute. Point to one area or location that used masking to generate a successful outcome in the past 18 months. CDC did a study from Georgia and published it in May, which involved 90,000 students in 169 schools in Georgia. Conclusion: Masks offer no statistically significant benefit to stopping the spread. Same for air filters, physical barriers, and distancing. What layers do work? Adult vaccinations and better ventilation, like opening a window in the classroom. Cumberland County has greater than 85% adults vaccinated. That is a tremendous accomplishment. Likely closer to 90% when you factor in natural immunity for those who are infected and have not been vaccinated. That statistic alone is our best defense for our children, and I want nothing best for our children. Near superior nations, the United Kingdom, all of Scandinavia, Iceland, France, Italy, recognize the social and developmental harms associated with masking children for prolonged periods. How will my kindergartner learn to read and enunciate this year with universal masking? Think about that. Children are less likely to have severe disease from SARS-CoV-2, thank God, and when infected, less likely to be symptomatic, which correlates with lower contagiousness. The onus is on those who recommend masking kids to robustly demonstrate a meaningful benefit, especially when there are obvious socio-emotional and educational harms from masking childrens. I find it disappointing that the board voted 9-0 for universal masking last month. That number doesn't reflect the views of the community that elected you to represent us. When did we become a zero-risk society? I'll leave you with these questions, and I know I probably won't get a response. What is the metric for success? When will the masks come off the children, or do you expect them in perpetuity? Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to make public comments this evening? With that, I will close public comment. Agenda item 6.0 is the superintendent's report.
Thank you, April. I just wanted to quickly share, shared a couple of slides. The first is really just to highlight and to welcome everyone back onto, into school buildings and onto campus. So we, we had two full days of staff professional development. So there was, there was a lot of building-based, mostly building-based exclusive meetings on Monday. And then on Tuesday, for the first time, I believe, and at least in recent memory, had, had the all-district opening outside on, on the turf with all the staff in the grandstands. And it was just, you know, we got, got the, got a little music going, and it was, we got a lot of just positive feedback and positive energy, and it was just, it was just really nice, I think, for everyone to, to see each other back in person. So we had a nice, nice breakfast with staff K-12, and then, and, and just had, had the ability just to connect, and just wanted to thank you, April, for your remarks, and, and also Michelle from SEF made some remarks, and, and we had, it was just, it was, it was a really nice opening, and it was great, you know, certainly for me to, to start to, to see everyone in, in district and, and set the tone for the year. And so that, that was, that was awesome. The sneak peeks at, at Wentworth and at the K-2 schools have been underway. I got a chance to, to take part a little bit in the, in the sixth grade and ninth grade orientation days. On, what's today? Thursday? On Wednesday, it's been a crazy week. On Wednesday, which, which was great, and, and new students to Scarborough High School, as well as the freshmen getting their tours. And then doing a whole lot of this, this morning, with the rain and, and transportation and buses and everything, but got everybody to school, pretty close to on time, even with, even with a long drop-off line at the middle school. But all the kids were just, just, they just, it was just a lot of positive energy, energy and ready to be back in buildings and see their friends and everything. So with, and then just really excited to see all of that as we go into next week with, with getting our elementary school kids back for full days as well. So the, just the staggered, all the preparations that went into, you know, getting everybody back and feeling comfortable, I just think was, was done so well, and, and so many, so many people putting so much effort into, into welcoming our kids back. So just really excited. And even got a first taste of my first senior parade in the class of 22, 20, coming in the building, and, and it was, it was neat. It was neat. So, and again, there's, there's certainly kinks to work out implementing our reopening plan. You know, things are going to shake out over the next week or so with transportation, getting arrival and dismissal things on time and, and rolling. But, but overall, it was just, it was just a really great day from, from where I, from where I sat, and it was, it was neat to be a part of it. I'm going to share it a couple, a couple of pictures as well. So the staff in the grandstands, and then a couple of pictures of the senior parade from this morning.
Thank you. Thank you. Agenda item 7.0 is the chair's report, and I will piggyback right on top of what Jeff just said in terms of just saying thank you. Thank you to all of our administration and the support staff who were able to pull off such a successful reopening the last couple of days. Most especially, thank you to our teachers and our support staff in the buildings who make that possible. I know that, you know, speaking personally, my kids had a very smooth couple of days, these last couple of days, and just positive attitudes. You know, just really grateful to be back in buildings. As Jeff mentioned, I was, I had the opportunity to say some opening remarks, and the opportunity to speak to our whole staff was one that I did not take for granted and will not soon forget. So I appreciated that opportunity, and it meant a lot to me to be able to do that. So thank you for that. I have a couple of announcements to make. Last night, September 1st, 2021, at the town council meeting, the town council voted unanimously at their second reading to put the turf track replacement on the November referendum. And so that is one hurdle that we have now, you know, one box we can check. I shouldn't say hurdle, one box we can check towards our pursuit of getting that approved and get that project underway. My other announcement is that nomination papers have all been returned. The deadline for returning nomination papers was yesterday. There are four candidates running for our three, three-year terms. On the town council, I didn't put this on the slide. On the town council, there are three seats on the town council. All three seats are uncontested. I would never use my position on the board to talk about myself ever, and I'm super uncomfortable. But I will announce that I have decided to run for one of those town council seats. And so in November, my name will be on the ballot as a candidate for town council. Candidates Night has been scheduled for Thursday, September 30th. So stay tuned and stay engaged and learn about the candidates that are running for positions. That it, we know how important it is to have faith and knowledge of the people who are making these important decisions. So please stay engaged. And that, I think, is all I have. Agenda item 8.0 is committee reports. If you want to do next slide, Diane, thank you. Communications.
Well, it looks like the topic of the night. Vote Yes on 2 is the focus of the communications committee. Now that the turf and track has been approved and it's on the November ballot, we do have a cross-functional team that's meeting every Monday afternoon at noon. We're working through our communication plans so that we can get out to the community, share what the need is. We're looking at creative ways to get out the information. So more to come on that as it gets closer and we have definitive plans. This is a call for kind of an all-hands-on-deck, knowing that this is the second time we've come out to try to get the ballot approval to replace the turf and track. As many folks from the board who can pitch in would be great, you know, greatly appreciated any input, suggestions, ideas. If folks are super creative with creating memes or posts that we can put onto social media, ideas on creative ways to get the word out, please let the communications committee know. Thanks.
Thank you, Leanne. Negotiation.
Yes, I put balloons on our slide.
I was so excited to see that.
So we had a meeting yesterday, the first, and I'm very excited to say we have a verbal tentative agreement for our bus drivers' contract. So it's a very exciting thing. We've had a lot of hours invested by not just myself, but also Alicia and Shannon off to my left, and Diane at the very end of the dais, not to mention the SEA team. So it's been a lot of time and effort put into coming to this. I'm very excited about the tentative agreement that we have. I think it's going to be very exciting for our bus drivers as well. Just to kind of give some ideas of next step for anyone that's new to this whole process, we will have an executive session sometime between now and our next meeting with the goal being that we have a ratification vote on the 16th. You know, and we talked about that a little bit last night because obviously these contracts, ideally, and this one is an example of this, go all the way back to the day after the expiration of the past contract, which was June 30th. So there's retro pay involved in this, and so we want to get those checks in the hands of our employees as quickly as possible. So we're looking forward to having that ratification vote on the 16th. We did have our mediator, our mediation for the educational support staff professionals on the 25th. It was a very productive five-hour session, but time well spent, and I do believe we're getting close to a tentative agreement there, too. So that's exciting to think about as well. Our custodian contract, as you all, or anyone that's been listening to me talk about this, know that we had three contracts on the, on the docket. The custodian contract is the last one to get in place, and the SEA is currently working on that scheduling. I'll be reaching out to the board with their availability so we can get going on that one as well. So real momentum and exciting things to announce hence the balloons.
Thank you, Nick, and thank you to the negotiations team who has been working a lot of hours on those contracts. Finance.
Cool. So yeah, we met yesterday and talked about what are some things that we can do between now and when the next budget cycle starts, and started talking about what our priorities and goals should be for this year. So I just want to quickly run through those. I think that the first one's pretty obvious. In the last couple of years, we've, we've seen, you know, improved collaboration and communication with town councils. So just want to continue that theme and strengthen that bond, especially as there's going to be new board members, and likely not any new town councillors, or maybe, maybe one, but some new board members involved. So making sure that, you know, there's a plan in place to maintain that relationship and then strengthen it. One of the other things we want to do, and I think we, we talked about this years ago, and then, you know, the, the planning for the pandemic and other budget goals took priority, but we really want to have a go at looking at the, the policies, the budget policies, and see if we can revamp those. We know that they're out of date compared to our, our current practices, so we want to just update those and make sure that they're currently, that they're up to date with what we, how we operate today, and then also look at what are some areas for improvement. We need to create a capital reserve fund, so that's something that's going to happen at the board level, probably be initiated by a board workshop that'll be scheduled, you know, sometime between now and probably like early or late winter. And then the final thing is more of just, you know, a support goal. I don't think there's a specific role necessarily for the finance committee in the district-wide projects, so the turf and track renovation, the consolidated school, but just being a support system and providing any information and support, and help that we can for both of those projects. That's it.
Great. Thank you, Sarah. Does that wrap up community reports?
So Kristen and I had the opportunity just two hours ago, and April joined us as well to meet with members of the Building Steering Committee for our consolidated, I, I use that word very trepidatiously, our new school for the primary school students. And that group, for everyone that kind of remembers, is a, is a very well-qualified group, full of engineers and designers and people that have been involved in, in school builds before. And so we talked out kind of where this process stopped back in April of 2020, just as COVID was kind of revving up. And I think our last meeting was actually one of our first virtual conversations as members of the school board with the public and a committee. And one thing that they talked about, that we talked about at length today, was the idea that the most success that they've, most of the time when these projects are successful is when they can really start with town leadership involved from the very beginning, with the important support of the school board and the educators to figure out what that building looks like. And so what they said is, you know, this time around, as we kind of go to start this charge again, which if my count is correct, is it, is at least the third time we've tried to kind of reinvigorate this process, starting with the board before us. And then, and, and when I say us, I mean me, because I've been here about three years. And then we kind of picked it back up, and then COVID/ budget issues kind of stalled us out right at the design phase. They really strongly encouraged us to consider approaching the town about leading this, specifically our town manager with the town council and collaboration with our superintendent, kind of those two individuals really spearheading this and leading it from the start with the support of the school board, rather than it be kind of a school-led effort that then we kind of go to the town council and say, here's what we've been doing. Will you support us? It's an idea of kind of getting the town leadership involved in the very beginning. So that conversation is literally just over two hours old, but, but Kristen and I did want to bring it to the board just, just as a kind of a heads-up that this is a direction that the committee is strongly encouraging. And when I say the committee, I mean all of us, but specifically the individuals from our town who know this work, who've done this work and have seen it when it works really well and when it struggles to get traction. And so I, I take their advice very seriously. I think it's a, it's a very good idea, specifically because we have seen trouble in getting it going when it's led just by the schools. And so I wanted to, it's not a rehearsed statement. I'm kind of saying it, thinking it and saying it as I go. And Kristen, please jump in if I missed anything. But we just wanted to get out in front of everyone tonight since we had a meeting and just kind of get that idea on the table as we think about restarting this effort. And if anything?
No, that was great.
Oh, I was going to call on Sarah first, and then you can go, Alicia. Yep, go ahead, Sarah.
So a question, and then I have a comment that was, is kind of a town council liaison update that I forgot to put a slide in for, so apologies for that. But I guess my, my question for Kristen and Nick is, what, what did you guys agree as next steps with this committee? And when is that going to take place, whatever the next step is?
I wish I could remember how Kylie put it in our meeting, but the next step would be really Jeff and Tom getting together and sort of talking about this. So there's no, I think, you know, there's a lot of conversations that need to happen, and that's probably the first one. And then there would be more conversations with the rest of the board. There would be more conversations with the council and sort of see how it goes from there.
And as far as like the next kind of action step for the project, I mean, those, getting that kind of groundwork done is really the very next thing. But the next actual action would be kind of reconnecting with Harriman, making sure they're still interested in the project, because we had kind of our last action as a board had been to approve, approaching them about doing kind of this next step about site selection and all of that. But that's the next step of the. that's the next step of the process. But first, we have to kind of get the town council and and specifically Tom on board with kind of co leading this with our superintendent to kind of get us moving again. But the next actual physical tactical step would be to reengage Harriman and do a site selection and kind of go to the next step of that. And look reviews, review sites, if I get if I'm remembering that right.
Yes.
Yeah.
So related to the site comment. As I don't know if anybody watched or was joining, I think April, you were there in person, but last night the town council held a C A or a down sort of update workshop. It's part of their scheduled cadence of reporting on how they're doing. And the gist of it is they're exceeding expectations in terms of their progress. But the important thing that I wanted to call out, or I guess the thing that relates to the schools was the discussion about a school being built within the Downs property. And I know that this is something we've talked about in the past, and it's kind of been this like maybe could be, but no one really knows kind of how to progress it. And it sounds like the next step that you guys are taking will hopefully consider the Downs as a site. One of the things that was discussed last night, though, in in the past, I think there's been some comments that a consolidated, there was no room for consolidated school within the Downs, and that was that is seems to no longer be the case. So I I I guess all of this to say, it should not be ruled out as a as a location until we've done the proper site work.
Yeah, and actually, one of the members of the committee has actually done some preliminary work and kind of working with I don't know who, but she's already identified, I believe, six or seven potential sites, and I wouldn't be surprised if that's one of them for the facility of this size and type. So, you know, it's really a matter of vetting those sites and kind of figuring out what's what's the best fit. But some of that preliminary work had already been had been done, but I do recall what you're saying, Sarah. I remember there was kind of like a yay school in the Downs. And then all of a sudden it was like, well, yes, but maybe not a building of this size. And 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 if that's changed again, it's you know, that that site is developing. And so I understand that that can go back and forth. But yeah, I mean, I don't know any details about what the work she's done, but I know that there's been some sites that have already been identified around town.
From a board perspective and from a public process perspective, the takeaway that I had today during the meeting was that there would be some value to the board and to the public to have members of the building steering committee come and just do a brief, very brief presentation, but not even presentation, just kind of present their rationale on the direction that they think that the building steering committee needs to go to the board and to the public. Members of the building steering committee articulated it so well to us today. And I just feel like in order to really do that work justice, nobody speaks to it better than they do. And so I would, I will be, you know, in communication with Jeff as he communicates with Tom and kind of pull these pieces together. But I would like to have, you know, for the board purposes and for the public purposes, have members of the building steering committee come and and kind of relay some of the summary that Nick and Kristen were able to give us, you know, from their own professional perspective. So that will be on a a future agenda for sure. Yes, Alicia.
I was just gonna Sarah asked my question, but I I wanted to ask you if you could invite Tom and members of the town council to that presentation.
Absolutely. If that is the direction that the conversations that Jeff and Tom have, and we can kind of get all on the same page, that that's that's the direction they want to head in. Absolutely, I can honor that. And I make it a note. Any other questions? Any other liaison or committee reports? Seeing none. I'm going to go ahead and move on to agenda item nine point O, which is new business, and I believe I'm turning this over to Diane.
Great. Thank you so much. So this evening, we have in front of you an update from the Scarborough Central Certification Committee. And I actually have two members of that committee who are in the audience tonight, Lisa Roberts and Jessica Conroy. And we have worked together this summer to update the Professional Learning Community Support System Plan as it relates to all teachers and ed techs in the district. And hopefully you all were able to receive the update and review that before this evening's meeting. So we worked this summer. The plan itself details the support that the district provides to beginning educators and the process for teachers and educational technicians to recertify. Our work this summer really stemmed from needed updates because of some changes in statutory requirements around certification and some D O E processes that changed. And so we really wanted to make sure that we were going back and make and ensuring that our document was the most accurate and reflective of what our practice should be. It was our plan to do this work last summer, and we got waylaid by COVID like the rest of the world did. So we spent some good time together this summer. And I think what I've tried to do here is really just highlight the substantive changes. The first is really shifting the requirements for beginning educators. Whereas the state no longer has a provisional certificate. Our plan really in the past had hinged upon the fact that beginning teachers had a two year certificate and needed to fulfill some requirements. And so we made some changes based on that. We also updated the standards that are connected to the work that our beginning educators do. The most current standards are called in task standards. Before we had used the what, the plan hasn't been updated for 10 years, right? So so the standards that were being used were dated. There's also no longer a requirement for recertifying educators to write professional action plans, if you will. You know, that that terminology in and of itself is problematic because it it sounds as though, you know, there needs to be some kind of correction. But up until this point, our educators would have to kind of write a plan for how they were looking to continue to improve their professional practice. And the most current statute is really just about demonstrating that they have attained a certain number of contact hours. And so we have streamlined that process for our continuing educators so that that is one less step for them to go through. All of our educators already write yearly professional goals. And so to have asked them to do this as part of their recertification plan was really a duplication of efforts. And so that is part of the update. And then just as an aside, but related to this, the other great piece of work that came out of this this summer is we are moving to a process of online documentation for all professional growth activities through a platform that we use called ProTrax. And so we just need to expand the use of that. And again, we certainly have heard feedback from lots of educators that we need to have less forms for people to fill out, less paper to push. And I think that we all agree to that. And so we're really excited about moving in this direction. And certainly, you know, I'm not trying to steal the spotlight from Lisa and Jessica. They did ask if I could speak this evening, but they are available if you have any questions. I'm sure they would love to come up to the mic.
Is there anyone on the board who would like to ask questions at this time?
I'll just make a quick comment. Actually, it's not a question. So don't worry, you know, it's one of the mic, but I I just know that as as part of the many negotiations conversations I've been in the last three years, one thing that is consistent is exactly what you said is you know, less forms, less paper. And so it's so exciting. And I think everyone is going to be happy to see that that's come true, at least in part due to this work. So I want to thank you all for for helping deliver on that promise that we've been talking about at the negotiation table for three years. At least three years.
Great. Other questions or comments? Okay, this is listed as an action item, which requires board approval. So do I have a motion to approve the Scarborough Central Certification Committee plan?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? Seeing none. I think we're ready to vote.
Right. Mrs. Giftis?
Yes.
Dr. Gill?
Yes.
Ms. Casalonis?
Yes.
Ms. Layton?
Yes.
Ms. Mrs. Lindstrom?
Yes.
Mrs. Seither?
Yes.
Mrs. Turner?
Yes.
And Ms. Bertulia?
Yes.
Excellent. Thank you, everyone. I realize I jumped the agenda because that's listed as an action item at the bottom of our appointments, but that's okay. We'll do it now. Agenda item nine point two is appointments. Agenda item nine point two point one is an appointment of our own. This is student representative committee assignment. I reached out to Yulia and asked her which committee she would like to be a part of, and she had indicated that she would like to join the curriculum committee. So I contacted Sarah, who is the chair, and we both agreed that that would be a fantastic addition to that committee. So do I have a motion to approve Yulia Bertulia to join the curriculum committee?
So move.
Discussion? Seeing none?
Mrs. Giftis?
Yes.
Dr. Gill?
Yes.
Ms. Casalonis?
Yes.
Ms. Layton?
Yes.
Mrs. Lindstrom?
Yes.
Mrs. Seither?
Yes.
Mrs. Turner?
Yes.
And Ms. Bertulia?
Yes.
Excellent. Thank you, everybody. The remainder of our appointments are the superintendent's.
All right, so we have two appointments. First is a high school student video production yearbook teacher. So Lorraine Aramondo has been chosen to fill this position created by a realignment. Mrs. Aramondo has received both her bachelor's of arts degrees in communications and her master's of arts in educational leadership and supervision from Seton Hall University. She's been a technology instructor at Communications High School in New Jersey for five years, as well as one year at R S U twenty one in Kennebunk. And then since two thousand and six, has been a technology and English instructor instructor at Chevress High School. Also a middle school math teacher, a one year position. So Heather Jacques has been selected to fill this position created by resignation. She earned both her bachelor's degree in life sciences and her master's degree in business administration from Maharishi University in Iowa. She anticipates receiving her doctorate in two thousand and twenty four. Mrs. Jacques has been a substitute teacher in both Old Orchard Schools and most recently as a long term substitute at Scarborough Middle School.
We can go ahead and bundle nine point two one, nine point two two.
My mic's not on, sorry. We can go ahead and bundle nine point two one and nine point two two into one motion. Do I have a motion to approve as presented?
So move. Second.
Discussion? Seeing none?
Mrs. Giftis?
Yes.
Dr. Gill?
Yes.
Ms. Casalonis?
Yes.
Ms. Layton?
Yes.
Mrs. Lindstrom?
Yes.
Mrs. Seither?
Yes.
Mrs. Turner?
Yes.
And Ms. Bertulia?
Yes.
Excellent. And Superintendent Bruno, we actually need to go ahead and approve all of the lead teacher, which I think is also, and we can just move to approve as presented if that's okay with you. Okay. So we received the full list of lead teacher appointments in our packet ahead of time. So do I have a motion to approve the lead teachers as presented?
So move. Second.
Discussion? Seeing none?
Mrs. Giftis?
Yes.
Dr. Gill?
Yes.
Ms. Casalonis?
Yes.
Ms. Layton?
Yes.
Mrs. Lindstrom?
Yes.
Mrs. Seither?
Yes.
Mrs. Turner?
Yes.
And Ms. Bertulia?
Yes.
Excellent. Thank you. Does that take care of all of our appointments this evening?
I believe so.
Okay, perfect. Agenda item ten point O is adjournment. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
So move.
Discussion?
Mrs. Giftis?
Yes.
Dr. Gill?
Yes.
Ms. Casalonis?
Yes.
Ms. Layton?
Yes.
Mrs. Lindstrom?
Yes.
Mrs. Seither?
Yes.
Mrs. Turner?
Yes.
And Ms. Bertulia?
Yes.
Excellent. Thank you, everyone. Enjoy your evening.
Thanks, guys.